Hey, good evening, everybody. It's 6:00 PM, so I think we're going to get started here this evening. And I believe that we'll be fairly timely. I want to thank our candidates for being here tonight. Brian Jakes, current board member, running for reelection and current board president. Angela Staley, running for board. And Kathy Brooks, running for Board of Education. So we have two open seats this year on the Board of Education. I thank all three of them for their willingness to sit in the hot seats and answer questions. And I thank all of you tonight for coming out to get to know the candidates and be informed voters. Wesley, our district IT person, will be recording this. It's not streaming live. It's being recorded so that he can make sure we have good sound quality. And then it'll be uploaded on the district website probably by tomorrow. So with that said, I'm going to talk a little bit about how this will work. And the first thing I want to bring your attention to, or I'm going to forget to say it, is right here in front of me. And Ms. Boyer will be helpful if anyone needs or has something going on there. But there are index cards and ink pens. And so as this goes along this evening, the last two questions of the evening will come from you, the audience. If, as you're listening, you think of a question you would like to ask, please come fill that out. You don't need to put your name on it or anything like that. Come back and put it right there in the same spot or hand it to Ms. Boyer, who's right here to your right, my left. And she will give those to me as we get near the end of the questions tonight. And we will ask your questions for the last two. And then we're going to ask the candidates to close with a few remarks of their own for closing remarks. They're going to have about two minutes per question. I have a single-function device here. All this thing does is tells time with the batteries good. And I will kind of gauge our responses being timely. And then for their closing remarks, I will give them four minutes. So with that said, candidates, do you guys have any questions before we get started?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you all for spending your evening with us here tonight. And we will just go right on along and get started. I don't believe I'm forgetting anything. So that's the first thing we're going to do. We're going to start, ask each candidate a question. I'm going to start here on, see, your right. And then we will go down the line with the same question. And from the right back to the left is how we'll go through these questions this evening. So, Mr. Jakes, are you ready for the first hot seat question?
Sure.
I feel like we need music to accompany this or something for suspense, but I don't have it. So, no further ado, our first question tonight for our candidates. Mr. Jakes, if you could tell us, please, why do you feel that you would make the best candidate for Marshall Public Schools?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out and joining us tonight to start. I think I would make the best candidate for the Marshall Public Schools for a variety of reasons, one of which would be my experience. I've been on the board for the last six years, and I've worked with, of course, the team of seven, team of eight, including the superintendent. And we've gone through some struggles as a school district. For those of you that know about Marshall or have followed the school district, the school board was not very popular six years ago. We were being audited. The community was calling for more transparency. There were some complications within central office that created some ill will within the district. And, of course, so I started at that time. I started in 2018, and shortly thereafter, right when I figured out about how this was working, we ran into the pandemic. In 2020, we changed how school was being taught. We had to go remote learning. We had to figure out how we were going to get through that situation. We had to give extra supports to educators. We had to figure out where to come up with devices. We had to problem solve and get through a lot of different things at that time. After moving past that point, we, of course, then came into the fire at the high school, another problem, but opportunity for us. We were able to renovate the high school after that time using insurance money and some small district money as well to accompany that. I think I've shown to be proven to be financially sound, to make decisions that were best for students, to make decisions and listen to our teachers and educators, to keep our insurance fully funded is what something that CTA, NEA, and our teachers always have wanted. And so for some of those reasons, I think I'm the best candidate. Outside of that, I've worked personally to become a better board member. I have over 38 units within MSBA. It doesn't work the same as college credit. It's not hours. It's not classes. It's how many different things I've gone to and attended. For the last three years, I've sat as the Region Five representative on the Executive Council. I also sat at the MSBA on a state level on the leadership and governance team. And I've become very studious to make sure that I work hard for our district and give our students, our teachers, the best that we can have, as well as our community. I'll stop there.
Thank you, sir. Angela, if you would, same question. Why do you feel like you would make the best candidate for Marshall Public Schools?
Well, I've spent a lot of time on the inner workings of Marshall Public Schools as a teacher and as an instructional coach. I've been here, well, I was in the district for 11 years as an educator. I got my curriculum instruction while working here, so I'm really familiar with the instructional side of teaching and education. I also obtained more higher ed at getting my ed specialist. And so the administrative side, I have an understanding of that, as well as my continued work in education. So upon leaving public education, I started my own consulting business, and Marshall was my first client. So I worked with the private sector in education, so I understand a lot about children and how their minds work, and humans and how our minds work. I also have endeavored into the public realm of Marshall with my role as a Realtor. And I've seen a lot from the community and kind of have an idea of what makes the community work. I work with a great group of Realtors. We have a great organization. And they do a lot to help the public and have worked really hard in helping Marshall Public Schools become better. So I'd like to continue that, being a part of the board. And I'm trying to think, what else? I'm always just, always wanting to work and do what's best for kids. And I think at the end of the day, that's the final question I ask of everything. Is this what's best for kids? What's the purpose? And are we moving in the right direction?
Thank you very much. Ms. Brooks, question is, why do you feel like you would make the best candidate for Marshall Public Schools for the Board of Education?
I feel that I would be really beneficial on the school board. I attended...
Can you hear me better now?
Okay. I attended Marshall Public Schools from kindergarten all the way through senior year. I have a child who is in first grade now. So we're kind of entering that second generation in the Marshall Public Schools. I don't have any education background, but I feel like that is, that's a perk for me because I don't really know how necessarily the schools are supposed to operate. That gives me kind of a fresh eyes and a fresh look at the way that operations are done. I do have an extensive background in child welfare, so I do have a different perspective as far as the safety and well-being of children. And, you know, I'm just a mom that really wants the best for my son and for all of the other children in the community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brooks, we're going to start with you now with this next question. We're going to work our way back across here. So the next question we have is, if elected as a board member, how would you best find that? Let me say it differently. If elected as a board member, how would you best support Marshall Public School teachers?
The best way to support teachers is, you know, pulling out the positives, the things that they're doing right. I know that a lot of us probably get on the Marshall community informed, and there's a lot of people on there that are really encouraged to go on the negative. But I feel like we really need to use that platform to pull out the positives for the Marshall Public School District and its employees. I do feel like the school has made a lot of adjustments in the past few years, which have, I think, been very reflective from the community. I would say just supporting them, bringing out the positives, and answering any questions or being there when they needed us.
Thank you very much for leading us in that question. Ms. Staley, how would you best support teachers of elected to the Board of Education?
Well, being a former teacher, pull it down. Being a former teacher, and I guess I'm still an educator, once an educator, always an educator, so supporting teachers, just listening to them. I have continued communication with my colleagues, my former colleagues and my friends in what's their concern. And I think there needs to be more than just saying things, like pulling the positives out about your teacher, but also ensuring that we're providing the proper tools that they need. And when I say that, tools, strategies, support in training, support in behaviors, support from your admin, and, you know, making sure that we are happy teachers, happy students, and vice versa. I think another thing that is really important is parent involvement. The more we communicate with our parents and support our teachers, I think that open line of communication will help with student discipline, as I understand that seems to be a big concern. And just, of course, I'm always in favor of increasing student, our teacher pay. I've been to the Capitol to discuss that several times, but kind of tongue-in-cheek, you know, teachers really do deserve more than they're getting paid. There's not a lot we can do as far as that goes, understanding the budget. But of course, I'm always going to be one that advocates for our teachers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jakes, if reelected to the board, how do you feel that you would best support the teachers of MPS?
That's a great question. Supporting teachers comes down to me, three real fundamentals. Listening. We have to be active listeners and find out what those needs are. We have to make sure we're funding those needs, so budget lines, what we can do to support, what we can do looking forward, and leadership. Mr. Pettit's been a very active and listening superintendent. That was some of the things that we went intentionally to try to go and find when we were looking at our superintendent search, to find someone who's going to listen to our body, to make sure that they were given the tools that they needed, the resources that they needed, to make their jobs better and easier. As Ms. Staley say, or Mrs. Staley, excuse me, said, you know, I think that teacher salaries are always too low, but there are some reasons that were there. Eighty percent of the budget roughly goes to teacher salaries, which leaves 20% to fund a lot of other things, you know? Having high-quality educators, continuing to do initiatives like allowing teachers to have continued education and being able to reimburse them for those, continuing to fully fund insurance, which has always been something teachers are about. So making sure that our ears are open to those things, making sure that we're pushing our one district employee, the superintendent, to make sure that he's listening and getting feedback from those groups, asking those questions all the time. You may hear us at board meetings say, so what do the teachers say? You know, what do the teachers think? Because we want to know how those are. Happy educators, good educators act differently in the classroom. They teach differently to their students. They listen differently to them. And having those resources available allows them to reach some of those kids that are harder to reach. So in order to support our teachers, we have to listen to them, we have to fund them, and we have to make sure that we're following through with the promises that we've made to them.
Thank you very much. I'm going to let you kick us off with the next one also, please, sir. Similar vein of question, last question being how, as board members, we would support teachers. This question is, how, if reelected as a board member, do you feel that you would best support the students?
Students is the main cause of being a board member. We're supposed to always make student-first decisions. Sometimes student-first decisions means we have to deal with adult issues on the other side of it, but should always revert back to students, whether it's how much we're going to pay teachers, whether it's new things that we're going to be able to put in classrooms. So one of the programs that I have been kind of pushing around and talking a little bit on the board and talking to people about is, I'd like to have a student liaison that comes, somebody out of the high school class that's in the student body. In other districts, they use the class president, and they bring that person back to be a liaison to the board and to have a student sit on the board so that person can go back and talk to the other students about what happens on the board. What we hear as adults, what we say as adults, doesn't always translate the same as students. That person also comes back to the board, they sit at board meetings, and they give that feedback back to the board. That's just one way I'd like to support students. Giving you better educational environments, that also goes back to teacher classrooms and tools, giving you the things that you need to be successful. So those are just some of the ways that we can help our students, making sure that we find ways to keep on providing lunch for our students. That's been a hot topic for us lately, is looking at how we can still feed students, making sure that we're looking at our basic needs of our students. A lot of those basic needs are being clothed, fed, understood, and heard when they come to classes, as well as, we want to put out a better product. Our product is graduating kids, and kids that are able to go out and compete, kids that will be able to sustain our town, and kids that will be able to come back to this town. Not all of us are going to stay here, but some of us are. Some of us are going to be the future mayors in this town. Some of those kids are going to be the people that are going to be taking care of us and making those decisions, and we want those people to be educated. So making sure that they have the resources, the correct teachers in the seats, and people who are certified to teach them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Staley, how do you feel, if elected to the board, you would best support students at MPS?
Well, having two graduates of Marshall Public Schools and three of my bonus kids in Marshall Public Schools currently, it's always a priority. And as an educator, supporting students is always your first priority. So supporting students comes in many forms, and that, I think, also goes back to your teachers, giving them the right tools to ensure that they're successful in the classroom. And by tools, I mean, safety, emotionally, physically, and providing them with the best education possible. So with curriculum background, I would probably, you might see me more than you want to in the schools, so just making, just being there, seeing what's going on, what's happening. I've had, I've taken a step back a little bit. I'm here a little bit for my stepchildren. But supporting students in different ways, more than just with the fancy technology, that's fun and a bonus as well, because we do need to keep them up to date in the real world. But mostly, just physically and emotionally, I think we have dropped the ball as a society on their emotional safety and that the emotional safety of teachers and giving the teachers the proper tools that they need to be more supportive of those students.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brooks, same question to you, please. How do you feel, if elected, you would best support the students of Marshall Public Schools?
I think the best way to support students is by obtaining their voice and really uplifting their voice. That may include getting in the schools and talking to different groups of children, getting their ideas, and bringing those ideas to life. I think a lot of the times, you know, children don't often speak up because they don't feel heard, especially by those adults around them. And I feel like if we, if we really, you know, kind of give them the power behind their voice, I think you'd be surprised how many people would step up. I also think, I liked the idea of the liaison. I think that was, that's brilliant. I also thought, you know, maybe a confidential opportunity for students to reach out to us, to relay concerns, to ask questions. That way, they didn't feel that their identity had to be disclosed if there was something that was troubling them in the school.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Brooks, I'm going to have you start us off with the next question, please. That question is, what goals would you like to see realized or set for Marshall Public Schools in the future? What goals would you like to see realized or set for Marshall Public Schools?
Goals that I really have is just continuing to push forward. And the school, it's really done a beautiful job of coming around the past few years. I went to the groundbreaking out at Spainhauer, and I'm really excited about the new school. I think it's going to be a positive, we're really going to see a positive effect in our community. I would like to just continue to see that growth for Marshall Public Schools. I think it's important to grow our community that way. And yeah, that would be my main concern.
Thank you very much. Ms. Staley, same question. What goals, if elected, would you like to see realized or set for MPS in the future?
The same as Ms. Brooks. I think we're on a very strong, positive path, continued improvement. I went to the groundbreaking as well. That was really exciting and really cool to see all the kids there in their little hard hats. But yeah, continued improvement. And one thing that I've spoken about several times out in the public and with my family, when I started working here in 2007, really dates me a little bit, but when I started working here in 2007, people were really shocked that I got into Marshall as a teacher. It was hard to break into Marshall. And the fact that I was hired, and when I came to the first day of professional development, I was one of the very few in, of the new teachers that was from, not from Marshall. And shortly thereafter, I came, you know, I moved here. So I'd like to get it back to where we are competitive in hiring, where teachers are knocking down our doors to get back in, because I know that we were there once, and I would like to get back there again. And we still have fabulous teachers here, but I think the more competition's a good thing. So if we're back to where we were when I got hired in 2007 and prior to that, that would be one of my goals. I want us to be a desirable district. And as a Realtor, that brings people to our town. Your school is the heart of your town. And when I talk to people with families coming into the district, that's the first thing I want to say, is we have great teachers. And I want to be able to say, we have a great school, we have a great support system in place.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jakes, same question. If reelected to the board, what goals would you like to see realized or set for MPS in the future?
When I ran six years ago, one of the first things I said was, I wanted to restore our pride. I was a 1995 graduate. At that time, on a Friday night, you could rob every house in town because everybody in town was at the football stadium. At that time, the stadium was at Valley. We didn't have one of our own at that time. But we had pride in our teachers, in our education. Everybody had an Al shirt on all day long on Friday. We're now wearing Chiefs shirts all Friday. I'm still a Chiefs fan, don't get me wrong. So I'd like us to have that pride in our district again, to where we, as a town, as a community, have that pride and bring that pride back and restore that pride. Another priority, I think, is we ought to have safe, continue to have safer security around our schools and also update our facilities. We're in the process of doing that. Passing a levy has helped us get there quite a bit. Thank you, the community who has set through that and came and said, we're going to invest in the school district. It's time. I believe we also have to maintain our financial stability as a priority, our reserves, looking at the amount of funds that we keep on hand, not because we're not wanting to pay our teachers, but because we have to be prepared for things that happen to us in the future. So I think that we have to do some of those things kind of as priorities. That's where I would like to see us going as a, as a school district in the future. So making sure we keep ourselves in a position to be leveraged against other areas, making sure that we're comparing our teacher salaries to other places, and making sure we're staying competitive and we're recruiting and bringing the best talent that we can to Marshall for the students and for our community to continue to grow.
All right. Thank you very much. I ask you to lead us off the next question as well. And candidates, you may find this a bit redundant, but if we can make it a really narrow focus in the way that this question's framed. What are your priorities? Let me say it differently. What are your priority educational goals for the district, if elected?
Priority educational goals? So our educational goals, to me, is I want to continue to see our student achievement rise. We just recently went through a long discussion in January with Ms. Jacoby, the Director of our Teacher and Learning, of where our APR went up 5%. There are a lot of different factors that go into that, as well as some things that are central office-controlled, board-controlled, not just all student achievement, but I'd like to see our students be doing better. Student achievement takes a while, and you have to kind of sit and you wait for it. And it has to come up through curriculum. It has to come up through advancement. It has to come up through dedication with our students. You know, we have a lot of base things. Being one-to-one with our computers and instruments with our students is also going to help with our student achievement. We have to recognize those kids that are achieving. We have to get greater recognition for them. If you follow the Facebook page, you see those students. If you're in the school district, you see those emails go back out. But are we getting that put in the paper? Are we getting those students recognized out a little bit farther? If our students see themselves, they see when you pass them in Walmart, and they say, hey, you know, I saw that you just got a one at State Band, or hey, I understand that you're advanced in the DECA competition, and you all are going to the national competition. Those things bring greater pride to our students, you know, recognizing them for the achievements that they're actually doing in real time are the ways that we can kind of help with student achievement, as well as giving them the tools. Students learn better when they have all those tools, when they're fed, when they feel emotionally and mentally taken care of. So also looking at our mental health issues that we have with our students, addressing our bullying problems, which are not just a Marshall problem. Marshall is actually doing pretty well against some other districts that I've communicated with about those issues. So making sure that we're actually giving our students the best that we can, give them, and the resources that we have to give them here in the district, and spending those resources on them.
Okay. Thank you for your response. Ms. Staley, same question. What are your priority educational goals for the district, if elected?
I would think I'm going to start just from the beginning with early childhood. Educationally, I think that early childhood is a focus where we need to get back to involving our parents, getting our parents proud of their student or their child's achievements, and just that early education and parent education, you know, there's, there doesn't, there's no handbook for becoming a parent. So getting parents involved early on and building that bridge, and that will lead to your student achievement later. So student achievement, obviously, is a, is one of, you know, my priorities, but also teacher retention, as I mentioned before, educationally. We, it was so hard to get into this district because teachers didn't leave. When they got here, they stayed here. And I think having that consistency in education is key. It's something that we haven't seen in a long time since I've, you know, been here and gone. And so that teacher support as well, too. It all just is cyclical. So teachers and student support, teacher retention. But I think one of my main focuses, if you guys know me or read anything about me, I have learned a lot about the child's brain, and I'm a trauma-informed educator. So I think a lot of that is stemmed back to early childhood.
Okay. Thank you very much for your response. Ms. Brooks, same question, please. Ma'am, what are your priority educational goals for the district, if elected?
I think the main goal is to ensure that we have services in place to, to be sure that every child has the same opportunity as the next for success within the school district. I know that looks different for a lot of different people. I also would really like to see, you know, maybe more prep in the high school for preparing children entering into the workforce or entering into college as far as, you know, preparing for testing and how to fill out applications for college, FASFA, like, a lot of that stuff is very confusing and I think sometimes often discourages children from pursuing further education. So that, I think that would be an important contribution.
Thank you very much. To our audience, I've had a few responses brought to me. If anyone needs an index card, I'm going to select two of the three that I've received so far, and I may consider others if anyone wants to get a question written down and send it our way. We would be glad to help you. Just raise your hand and let us know. I say that before I ask what'll be the last question before we get to the audience questions. The last question is, I'll just begin with you, please, Ms. Brooks. What student challenges, not talking about academics so much, but other student challenges, whatever that might be to you, what student challenges are going to be a priority for you, if elected?
Student challenges, you know, as far as my history in child welfare, I've seen a different perspective of things that do occur in, in our schools as far as social and emotional needs of children, and I think that's really important. I do think that we have a fabulous social work team at the, at the school that I've worked very closely with. I think just putting a little bit more attention on that and ensuring that we are giving children a safe place at school to meet their social and emotional needs.
Thank you very much. Ms. Staley, same question, again, not academic, but student challenges of other sorts. What student challenges are going to be a priority for you, if elected to the board?
Well, I'll try not to get on my soapbox here, but again, as a trauma-informed educator and social-emotional learning certified trainer, student challenges, I, it's just hands-down on their behaviors. There's a reason behind every behavior. I think a lot of times, social-emotional learning gets kind of a bad rap because people think we're just letting students get by with that. And I think we need to go back, and I speak about this all the time when I do professional development for teachers, is we've got to finish the lesson. We've got to understand that students need that accountability and they need that structure. And behavior goes hand-in-hand with that. They, they need structure. They like structure, whether they will tell you they like it or not, they need it, and they do like it. So student behaviors, emotional development, and also, I think, well, it's not going to students, it's kind of veering off the path, but helping teachers understand those behaviors and how to handle them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jakes. You'll be answering this last question from our teacher representative groups before we get to the audience questions for all of you. And that question, again, not specific to academics, but what student challenges, I'm sorry, yeah, what student challenges, aside from academics, are going to be a priority for you, if reelected?
I think we have to work on creating some better safe spaces for our students. Someone mentioned a little bit earlier, the anonymous kind of conversations, you know, giving students a feel, a chance to feel like they can bring their issues without punitive actions from their peers. There's a lot of fear of retaliation whenever anyone is a whistleblower, as you all know, in any level of things, whether it's a first grader, whether it's going to be a senior in high school, or whether it's an adult. And we need to find ways to give those safe spaces to our students, which will help us have better early interv- have better early intervention. Early intervention will keep us from having small problems that turn into bigger problems. Challenges are not only with the bookwork, a lot of our challenges happen on the mental health side. A lot of those challenges happen in the home. And making sure that when students start at school, they feel safe and they feel supported, and they feel like they're equal to everyone else that is there. We're going to have to make sure that we're meeting kids where they are. We want people to be here, but sometimes we need to make sure that we're getting down here and start where they are, and then bring them up to the levels that we want them to be. We have to teach down to those levels. Most of our kids are, half of our kids are not on grade level. So we have to make sure that we deal with those and bring them up, you know, as well as progress the students who are at grade level or above grade level, to keep them going, to keep them also engaged, to keep them wanting to achieve, and to keep on going farther in life. So that's kind of an equity issue that we need to work on, whether that's financial or whether it's academic with kids, or whether that may be emotional. We have to treat the whole student and make sure that the whole student comes out as a better person overall, and that isn't just on the gray cards. We need to be teaching better people and raising good people.
All right, thank you very much. That's going to bring us to the audience questions, and we'll begin with you, Mr. Jakes, leading us in this question from the audience. I'm going to read this exactly as it's written, and then I'll challenge you all to try to stick to that two minutes, because these are thoughtful questions. Some activities, like athletics and music, benefit greatly from five or more days of instruction and practice. If the district was to shift to a four-day week of instruction, how would you support these needs, such as off-day transportation to get kids here?
That is a good question. So one of the things that's bouncing around right now in the funding world for schools is that they're looking to incentivize districts that are staying with a five-day school week. They realize that a five-day week gives students a better chance to be seen by our counselors, to be seen by our teachers, to be fed better in schools. And so they're looking at incentivizing that. If we were to switch to a four-day school week, that would change the amount of time that we saw teachers. It would change the way that we saw students. We would be making, of course, adjustments to get our students back into those things, busing or other things, as it was necessary. But the same thing's happened for us kind of during the COVID time. When we went back out into communities and we took food and other things back out, we would just have to change the way that we did business. You know, a lot of districts are off on Mondays. Childcare is a huge issue when you drop down to a four-day school week. It may feel a little bit better for the students, it may feel a little bit better for the teachers, but those people who are in those normal five-day workplace jobs have to figure out what they're going to do with those kids on those off days. You know, so we would have to think about things such as even childcare, you know, is going to be going on for those students on those off days within our communities. I think that sports, academics, those go hand in hand somewhat, but, you know, the purpose of the school is to make sure that we're giving kids education. The extracurriculars are the bonuses that we do. A lot of practicing things can't happen necessarily on days that you don't have school. They're changing a lot of those rules, they've changed a lot of those rules. That's why a lot of districts are off on Mondays, because Friday night football and other things. But there are going to be ways that JV games usually are Monday night, for instance, usually in football. So we're going to have to transport kids, we're going to have to make changes in the way that we do things. So four-day school weeks require a lot of different planning, and we've toyed with that idea a couple of different times in the district, looking at what that would mean for our students and what it would mean for our educators, and what it would mean for us as a community. It wasn't feasible for us in the past, and I don't know if it's necessarily feasible for us going to the future, but we always want to support students, and whatever that takes to get them into the facilities or to support them and help is what we need to do.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Staley, same question, I'll read it again. Some activities like athletics and music benefit greatly from five or more days of instruction and practice. If the district was to shift to four days per week of instruction, how would you support those needs? For example, off-day transportation to get the students here?
Well, I work with four schools that do a four-day school week, and the demographics is completely different in a four-day school week. Personally, I don't know if it would work for a district as large as ours, but if we did shift to that, we would just have to remap everything that we're doing. If we need to have practice on Mondays, if that's our day off, then those parents and families, we would have to make arrangements for that, have a pickup point. There's so many things to consider there, and the cost. And then at that point, is it really cost-effective to do a four-day school week? So that's, I feel like that kind of goes all hand in hand, all the things that we have to consider in a four-day school week. It sounds really nice, but also, as Mr. Jakes mentioned, you know, COVID proved to us that in-person and having as many contacts with our students is better for our students. It keeps the routine going. So if we did shift to that, it would just have to be a whole remapping and understanding from coaches and music teachers, all the extracurricular of how we're going to run business. And I think that's just something we're going to have to, we would have to tackle as it came to us on a case-by-case basis.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Brooks, same question, and I'll read it for you again. Some activities like athletics and music benefit greatly from five or more days of instruction and practice. If the district was to shift to four days per week of instruction, how would you support these needs? For example, off-day transportation, getting kids to school?
I would agree with what's already been kind of discussed as far as our district changing into a four-day school week, but I do feel like that would, if we were to come to that situation, it would have to be a collaborative conversations between staff members, coaches, teachers, and figuring out what options we do have and what opportunities we can tap into and resources we can tap into to ensure that those needs are being met for the children.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to ask you to start us off with this last question from the audience, and then just for all of the candidates, once we get through each of you answering this last question, we will move to the closing remarks, just so you're ready for that. So Ms. Brooks, if you'll start us off with this question from the audience, please. If you could pick one professional development topic, and you could train all of the MPS staff, what would that be and why?
Social and emotional behavior. I think we're seeing an increase in that. A lot of it does kind of go hand in hand with substance abuse, and unfortunately, our community has been affected by that. I think it's really important for our teachers and our staff to understand why these type of behaviors happen and how we can help resolve those. You know, not necessarily saying that teachers need to have the required training, but I think to handle emergency situations to get them to the correct people within the school. I think that's really important right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Staley, same question. If you could pick one professional development topic and train all MPS staff, what would that one topic be and why?
Well, I happen to love this question. So being a professional development presenter and working with schools, I feel that, exactly what Ms. Brooks said, social-emotional learning, but more, I think more importantly, trauma-informed. And when you say trauma-informed, it's actually, like I said earlier, it's very structured. It's teaching teachers that, especially newer teachers, new teachers to the profession, what that means to be trauma-informed. So I think we kind of picture kids flying off the handle, and it's really more than that. It's having a routine, so how to set up your classroom. So if I could get every single teacher in here, and if you let me do professional development, I would love to help teachers set up their classroom, teach them how important it is to build relationships with your students. That all goes hand in hand with academic achievement. So I would love to, I would love to talk about that a lot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jakes, I'll have you close us out with that same question. If you could pick one professional development topic and train all MPS staff, what would it be and why?
Not to mirror the other candidates, but I believe that, you know, as I've said, our mental health issues are a big place, looking at our mental health development and, of course, trauma-informed care. You know, we're dealing with a different breed of students than we dealt with 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago. There's a lot of fractured families, there's a lot of change that students are dealing with, there's a lot of stepparents. There's a lot of things that they come to school with, that they're burdened with, that not every family understands, not every teacher understands in the classroom. So I think giving them those tools to understand where these kids are coming from, you know, how to communicate them better where they are. We changed our discipline model in the district to the BIS model, which is a restorative criteria model. You know, understanding how their actions affect other people around them, the same way as the teachers. Need to understand how their actions are affecting other people around them, recognizing not just when kids are off. I know our educators see that our kids are different, but making sure that they can put the right resources in front of them. What do you do when a child's responding in these ways? You know, I think our teachers care, I think our teachers want to help, but I don't know always if they have all the right tools to be able to help. And even in our small town, do we have all the facilities or all the tools around us within the community to help some of these children? So I think that we can teach some better tools. I think that we can give them some better tools to put in their hands and show them how to respond and react and to see their students better.
All right, thank you all, all of you, for all of your time in responding to these questions. And now the last challenge of the evening for each of you, and you've all done a fantastic job. I'm actually going to set a four-minute timer, and I think that this makes a noise when that goes off, not to add pressure, but in lieu of music, I guess, I thought I would add some fun to it. So we're going to begin with you, please, Mr. Jakes, regarding whatever topics you would like to discuss in your closing remarks. When you're ready, four minutes, go ahead, sir.
All right, no countdown, no three, two, one. All right. So the four of us were asked when we were first applied for the board or chose to run for the board, the district asked, you know, we'd like you to answer four questions that we're going to put on the website. I encourage you all to go and read those answers that we gave on the website to give you an insight of not just what we flew off the cuff and talked about up here in front of you, but actually what we really felt and what we joined. I joined the board or ran for the board, like I said, six years ago. I sat at the Knights of Columbus Hall, and I sat with Dr. Meyer, Matt Smith at the time, and myself. We were running for two open seats on the board between the three of us. At the time, Dr. Meyer and I were elected, I was nervous. I didn't know what was going to go on. I began this journey on the school board, thinking that I had all the answers. I found out at the first meeting, I knew nothing. I found out at the second meeting, I learned a little bit. I see Mr. Lenz, who's on the board with me, nodding his head in the beginning because he's now found out that he knew less than he did, but now he knows a lot more than when he started. And that's where I am as well now. After six years, I've become a student of how to actually manage and run school districts, and that deals with putting the right people in the right place, putting the right person in the right seat, you know, and leading as governance, leading from the top, not necessarily being in the day-to-day. That's the position of a board member, is making sure that you have policy, you have procedures in place, that you don't get down in the nitty-gritty of what's going on. So what I said on that page, if you go and look at it, says, "I'm running for the board to continue the work that I've started, and I want to continue to move the Marshall Public School District and the Marshall community in terms of community synergy, improved education for our future and the youth of our community." After election, I plan to continue to serve the district by continuing to operate in a transparent light and being available to the community members, maintaining policy adherence, and in updating the Marshall Public Schools governance plan. We've had that plan in place for two years. It needs some revisions, it needs some updating, it needs to set some farther goals out. My priorities include supporting the upward trend and increased student achievement and providing funds through budget and needs to make this happen for our supporting educators and students. In terms of buildings and maintenance, I want to continue the redirection of waste and improvement of practices from an oversight level and through expectations of the superintendent and his direction of his team and district employees. That's why I started running on the board. I saw there were problems in the district from the top down, and those changes have to start from the top down. In the last two years under Mr. Pettit, we've seen a lot of different changes, a lot of different community sentiment. We've seen a lot of different support from the community, as well as, Mayor Lutterby's also here, as well as our interactions with the city, such as the land deal that we're looking to finalize hopefully at the April meeting as well. We have to continue to do things to push our students to do better, to empower our teachers, and to move us forward as a district. Since I've been on the board, I've been president for the last three years. I've served as a vice president, MSBA delegate, and a member-at-large. I've served, as I said, on the Region Five Executive Committee for the last three years, and the region's representative on the State Leadership and Governance Committee. I was asked on Monday to serve for the MSBA's New State Growth and Inclusion Committee. We have greater communication with our families now than we did before. That's an effort of our board to be more transparent. We are streaming our meetings. That was something that kind of came up place during COVID, but it was something we chose to continue because we know not everybody can get there. Looking at things such as accessibility issues. My mother really wanted to come and hear me tonight. She's in a wheelchair. This building is not in a good place for us to be. We can get people in here, but it is not something suitable, and she didn't want to make that journey. We've got to look at making some of our facilities more ADA compliant, such as this one here. We have taken deliberate steps widely through the governance plan, future visioning, changes in working with Navitas. If that's my four-minute mark, then I'd just like to thank you all for coming, like to thank the other candidates for choosing to look at an opportunity to support the district, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Ms. Staley, whenever you're ready, you can begin your closing remarks, ma'am.
As Mr. Jakes said, those questions that were sent to us, I encourage you all to read them. And if you don't know much about me, I do have a Facebook page that supports my election campaign for school board. Regardless of the outcome, I hope the outcome is a good one for me. I really would appreciate your votes and be a member of our Marshall Public School Board. But regardless of the outcome, my work in education is not going to stop. So I will continue to be an advocate for Marshall Public School and for all schools. I've learned a lot about politics in the last year, I would say even in the last six months. I'm still not a politician, but I have visited the Capitol with an education agenda in mind. I've met with several representatives, I've talked to Ed Lewis, Randolph County Representative, about House Bill 1770, teacher retention and recruitment, and that's something I'm really passionate about. We need to do more for our teachers, thus doing more for our students, and I will always be a supporter of education. I've even talked to Dr. Parisi at Valley about a mentorship program, which I really hope to continue that discussion again soon for our teachers going out into the field and improving and retaining our own students, our own children of Marshall, and just making Marshall a better place for everyone and a desirable place to live and housing for, you know, I'm still in the community selling houses, buying houses. We need more houses, and so it all goes hand in hand with a positive school community. So I'm trying to think of anything else, but yeah, education is my passion, and you won't find anybody more passionate about that for your students and for your teachers.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Ms. Brooks, you're going to close us out tonight with your closing remarks, if you would, please.
Like I said earlier, I am a graduate of Marshall Public Schools. I do have a heart in making this school district something positive, something for people to really idolize. I chose to stay here and to raise my children here and to put them in Marshall Public Schools for a reason, and I just want to be a part of that change, of the new Marshall District. I also think that my background in child welfare would be beneficial. It is a different perspective on the school board. I know right now, the State of Missouri and the Department of Social Services is really pushing for prevention of child abuse and neglect, as well as prevention of children entering foster care. A part of, I feel like I would be very instrumental in coming up with processes or goals to meet these requirements of the State of Missouri. I, too, am trauma-informed. I'm also trained in continuing education on substance abuse and mental health crises. I feel that I have a lot of, a lot of good education to provide to other people, as well as continue to educate myself, to support our children, providing them with a safe place to attend school, as well as a great place to be employed. So I appreciate your time.
I want to thank all of our teachers and teacher representatives that helped put together these questions really quickly, and I want to thank all of our candidates. I feel like Marshall Public Schools is in a truly wonderful place, and the voters are going to have a really hard decision. I thank all three of you for your interest in supporting the school, and I think that no matter what or how it turns out, that the voters are going to have a tough decision to make, and that the school's going to benefit from any of you that serve on our Board of Education. Education. So thank you all for your time and all your hard work. Thank you for everything that everybody did to put this together tonight, and for everybody that came out to spend the evening with us. Now, we can still make it to bed by 7:00 PM, I'm going to let you guys get on out of here. And if the candidates want to stick around, you want to speak to them and ask some questions one-on-one, maybe they'll have time, hopefully, to stick around as you exit out of here this evening. I hope they might stick around for a few minutes and let you speak to them individually if you'd like. Thank you all, have a good evening.